He is unable to attend tonight due to health precautions. However, he was extremely dedicated to this event and wanted to thank everyone for coming, and he had a few words that he would like for us to share. Although I couldn't be here tonight, I wanted to personally thank all the candidates, school staff, and members of the audience, in person and online, for supporting the Great Crossing Student Y. I hope that this debate is helpful to those who haven't voted and is a turning point in youth advocacy within Georgetown. Again, thank you all, and I look forward to meeting you later at a later date. My name is Noelle Eubanks, and I'm a junior here at Great Crossing. I'm our Y Club Secretary of Service.
My name's Alessandra Dallenger. I'm a sophomore here at Great Crossing High School, and I'm the club coordinator of the Student Y.
My name is Ian Van Steenberg. I'm also a junior here at Great Crossing High School, and I'm the Vice President of the Student Y. Student Y is a community service and civic engagement club, so we wanted to have this wonderful opportunity to let the public get to know their city council candidates.
Before we welcome the candidates to the stage, we must inform you that we have reached out to all the candidates. However, some are unable to attend due to health concerns or conflicting events. We are now going to welcome all the candidates. First up is Ms. Tammy Lesby Mitchell. Mr. Mark Showalter. Mr. David Lesby. Mrs. Connie Tackett. Mr. Stephen Price. And Mr. Todd Stone.
On behalf of the Great Crossing Student Y Club, we would like to thank everyone for coming out and participating in this civic event. We would also like to thank Great Crossing High School and the Scott County Board of Education for allowing us to host this debate.
With that being said, we wanted to briefly explain the format to all of you. Candidates will begin with a brief introduction of themselves. Then each candidate will have one-minute uninterrupted opening statement. After that, we will move into an hour of moderated public debate composed of five major topics. Each candidate has been informed of these topics, but not the specific questions beforehand. Candidates will face questions from the moderators to which they will answer, much in the same style of a presidential debate. When starting a topic, a leadoff question will be asked, and the candidates will guide the discussion from there. We would like to remind the candidates that because of time, not all candidates will get a chance, will get to respond to each question, but we will do our best to ensure equal speaking time. After the moderated portion of the debate, we will then move into questions from both the crowd and those in the community. We will then finish it off with another one minute to each candidate for their closing statement. All candidates have agreed to a set of rules beforehand to maintain decorum and civility, and the candidates' spots were selected at random. We will now, we will now start with a quick introduction, starting with Mr. Stone. Please briefly introduce yourself to the audience.
I am a first-term city council member. I retired from the Georgetown Police Department after 20 years. Two years before that, I worked with the Scott County Sheriff's Office. I've been a football coach here in Scott County, not only with the school system, but with youth league as well, and it has been a very interesting time as a city council member, and I look forward to hopefully getting two more years to serve. Thank you.
We will now move it on to Mr. Stephen Price.
My name is Stephen Douglas Price, born in Georgetown in 1946. Makes me 74 years old. I've lived in Georgetown all my life, except for 10 years in Lexington, and 10 years working in farming in California, in Canada, in New England, and Europe. My grandmother led me into horticulture when I was maybe five years old, six years old, and we, we had a strong tobacco crop statewide here at one time, and, and I grew up working in tobacco and, and doing basically any farm work I could find to do. And after working out of state for 10 years, I returned to my hometown Georgetown, bought a piece of land with the intent to raise crops, and that's, that's what I'm doing today. That's what, that's my profession. Not only horticulture, field crops, but botany, study of natural vegetation, as opposed to artificially cultivated vegetation. And I remember when Georgetown was green and, and much more vegetated than it is today. And we are in big trouble in Georgetown, in my opinion, because of mechanization, the jobs associated with mechanization are causing de-vegetation, deforestation, bare ground, and, and I noticed coming in tonight, all the, the landscape around this building is designed by architects for mowing. I want to do something about that. I want to revive vegetation and forests in Georgetown. I noticed the table here is made by the Home Company somewhere. I asked Noelle if she's acquainted with Home Company. She said no. We could have made this table here in Scott County if we had any trees, but Georgetown's Code Enforcement Office doesn't want any trees.
Mr. Price, can we please wrap this up?
I'm sorry?
You, your time has elapsed.
Thank you.
Can we please wrap this up? Your time has elapsed.
My time is up?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Thank you. We will now move on to Ms. Connie Tackett.
Hi, my name is Connie Tackett. I'm a lifelong resident of Georgetown and Scott County. I'm an active member of Victory Life Church. I'm the baby of 12 siblings, and I graduated in Scott County in 1974. Married Ralph Tackett for 47 years. I have two children, Maria and Joey, seven grandchildren, Kaylee, Kelsey, little Joey, Courtney, Tyler, Micah, and Bradley. Ralph and I own our own, and broker our own real estate company and property management company, and it's a family-owned. Our daughter-in-law, Ashley, and our granddaughter, Kelsey, works with us, and we love it, and thank you.
Okay, thank you. We will now move on to Mr. David Lesby.
Thank you. I'm David Lesby. I'm a lifelong resident of Georgetown. I want to thank Landon and the other students that are hosting our event tonight, and certainly the folks that came out to listen, and those that might be watching on the Internet. This is a wonderful facility, and we appreciate the opportunity to be here. I've been employed by Whittaker Bank for 25 years, do commercial lending. I've got three daughters. My youngest daughter, Lauren Lesby, graduated from this high school just last year. My wife is Joy Lesby, who is the principal here at Great Crossing, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now move on to Mr. Showalter.
Hello, I'm Mark Showalter, and I've served on Georgetown City Council for 10 years. My wife's a teacher at Royal Spring Middle School. My son, Sam, is a sophomore at Transylvania University, and my daughter's a junior here at Great Crossing High School. To the Y Club, thank you very much for the invitation tonight. I think this is a wonderful event, so thank you very much.
We will now move on to Ms. Lesby, Ms. Tammy Lesby Mitchell.
Good evening. My name is Tammy Lesby Mitchell, and I'm a lifelong resident of Georgetown. I love this town, and that's the reason that I decided to run for city council. I have a passion for giving back to the community that has walked beside me all my life. I worked for 30 years at the Lexington Herald Leader in management. I worked with all sorts of different people, advertisers, customers, people from all walks of life, reporters, people that were being reported on, and that gives me a unique perspective. I can come at problems from all different angles, and I think that, that makes me uniquely qualified to fill my position. I'm finishing my first term as a city councilwoman, and I have enjoyed it thoroughly. Thank you.
The first topic is COVID recovery, which we will spend a maximum of 15 minutes on. The first question is posed to Mr. Showalter. Just a reminder that this decision was made randomly. Mr. Showalter, seeing as we are living in the middle of a health pandemic that has affectedly, has affected virtually every aspect of our lives, what is the first step in transitioning Georgetown back to normalcy? You have 30 seconds to respond.
As all of us know, that we're in uncharted waters right now with the COVID, and I'm hoping that the worst is behind us. Hope better days are ahead. I think we have to continue to listen to the doctors and scientists all across this country on making sure that when, as the economy reopens, that we do it in a safe manner. Thank you.
Thank you. Would any other candidates like to speak on the topic? Three may speak. Please raise your hand if you would like to speak on the question.
I will.
Ms. Lesby Mitchell?
I would say that it's important for us as a city, what we tend to do is listen to the direction that is given to us by our, our governor, because our governor is in contact on a daily basis with federal authorities, the CDC, and so forth. So it's important to listen to our governor as we make decisions about our town. It's also important to listen to the citizens of the town, and such, things such as trick-or-treat that we voted on this past meeting, where we listen, and we try to do things to get the community rolling again, but we try to do them in a safe manner so that it's important, especially for our children, to have a normal, as normal a life as they can have, so.
Thank, thank you. Mr. Lesby?
Thank you. The council, our role, it's kind of unique here in the community. This is the first public meeting that we've been in, I guess, since, I don't know, March, February? So this is, this, we're kind of stretching our legs and kind of getting out and about. Like the others, it's, it's important for us to, to listen to the experts and, and heed their advice, and I think a common sense approach is the best approach. You all are back in school, you all are doing the things that are recommended, you're wearing your masks, you're using the hand sanitizer, you're trying to be distanced from each other. So those are the same things that, that we're doing and certainly recommend as well.
I apologize, your time has elapsed. Thank you.
As you were saying, it is very important that we listen to what the, the experts say, and if we use common sense and wear our masks and social distance, there's no reason why we can't keep our community open and our nation open. We just all have to be individually responsible for those decisions, knowing what we need to do.
Thank you. We do ask that for each question, we have three candidates respond, but we do ask that you all raise your hand, so let's keep it as even as possible, but thank you.
We will now move on to...
Is it, would it be possible for you all to remove your masks?
We have, since we are within six feet of each other, and we did measure out your all's tables to be six feet, we are keeping our masks on just as an extra precaution.
Yeah, it's wise to keep it on, but, but I'm having a hard time hearing.
We will speak up. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now move on to our second question of the topic. It is increasingly alarming that Scott County has been a red zone prior, and for coronavirus cases, what do you plan to do to reduce the cases in the county? Who would like to respond first? Mr. Todd Stone, please respond.
One of the things that we need to do, there is several cases, excuse me, at, at one of the local nursing homes, so we need to continue to work with our local WECO Health District to help the nursing homes. My, my mother's in a nursing home in Lexington, and she contracted COVID-19, so, you know, it's, it's something that we need to continue to work on and work with the health officials to make sure that the ends, that we end this.
Thank you.
Would any other candidate like to respond to the question?
If you wouldn't mind, would you, to repeat the question?
Okay, I will repeat it. "It is increasingly alarming that Scott County has been a red zone for coronavirus cases. What do you plan to do to reduce cases in the county?" Would you like to respond, Mr. Price?
I would respond that in general, home gardening, home horticulture causes and creates social distancing. People who, who are busy raising crops don't want to be bothered with conversation, they want space to work, and horticulture creates that space, which space constitutes social distancing. If you ask me, horticulture is the healthiest work there is.
Thank you.
Any other candidate? Ms. Tackett?
I think also doing what the health officials say, but it's also being responsible and doing the sanitization our own self, teaching our kids, our grandkids to do that. And I, myself, am around my elderly sister, and I make sure that when I take her food and do things with her, that we're, we're socially distanced, or masked, and that kind of thing. And right now, we're in, like Mark says, uncharted territories, and as we learn more, we try to be obedient to that.
Thank you.
Would any other candidates like to respond to that question? Ms. Lesby Mitchell?
I would just say that the most important thing is to lead by example. People are watching the, the leaders of the town, the heads of government, and they're watching how they react, and we need to set a good example because people do look up to us.
Thank you. Our next question, what are your thoughts on expanding COVID-19 testing in Scott County? Would any candidates like to respond? All right.
Please.
That's all good. What are your thoughts on expanding COVID-19 testing in Scott County? All right, we can move to the next question. Okay, thank you. You may begin.
May I?
Yes.
I had, I had a swab test the day before yesterday, and, and three months ago, or two months ago, I had another swab test. I think one, one thing that we, as, as, if we get, if I get elected, all government personnel could rarely submit to swab testing, and, and I thank you for taking my temperature when I came in the door here tonight.
Next question, how do you plan to reverse the negative effects COVID-19 has had on our small businesses, many of which have fallen on hard times? Would anyone like to answer this question? Mrs. Tammy Mitchell?
One of the things that we can do is, the first time that Congress was considering relief funds for individuals, our city, Kentucky League of Cities, who works closely with the city councils across the state, ask us to write our congressman and senator and ask that they consider local cities as businesses, because our revenues are tied directly to the success of the businesses in our town. That's something that I did, and we did, we were able to get some money, some relief.
Excuse me, your time has elapsed. Thank you. Any other responses? Mr. Todd Stone?
One of the things that we could look at as a city council or as a city is to, with the small businesses that are potentially in danger, is try to work with them on their business licenses and any other issues that come up as far as their, their city taxes, and come up with some way to work with them so that the city still collects that money, but it's not at a...
I'm sorry, sir, your time has elapsed. Mr. Lesby?
The things that I've had some experience in is, from the banking perspective, is helping small businesses with the PPP money that, that went out across the country, but specifically here in Georgetown. That really stimulated the businesses, it, it helped Georgetown, helped the community, helped the city continue to have the revenue flow, and then we applied for the CARES money, which is what Tammy Lesby Mitchell was talking about. By receiving that money, that took some pressure off the general fund as well, which certainly helps everybody in the community.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, we will move to the next question. What should Georgetown do to be prepared in the event of another major health crisis? Would anyone like to speak on that? Mr. Lesby?
That we get asked each and every election, it's what's the most important issue, and generally, to me, it's, it's the financial situation that the city or our local government's in. And as we saw, when, when businesses slowed down, people weren't working, the revenue to the city slowed down as well. So having a healthy fiscal, being physically responsible and having a healthy reserve is critical to, to any community, and especially to us.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak on the question? Yes. What should Georgetown do to be prepared in the event of another major health crisis?
Georgetown do to prepare for what?
Another major health crisis.
Another major, major health crisis?
If one was to occur, yes. If not, we can move to the next topic. All right, we have one more question for COVID recovery. How do you plan to help those who have lost jobs due to, due to the pandemic? Sorry. How do you plan to help those who have lost jobs due to the pandemic?
I'll take that one, or at least what I've done. Having a property management company, you know, we need people to clean, we need handy men and things like that, so we'll give people a chance to do that. We've also helped people with the, when they've received their funds, to help them through their rent time and that kind of thing, until they can find jobs, or when their jobs were, their hours were cut down to 20 hours, we've worked with them. So specifically, specifically for me and, and our company, that's what we've done to help keep them alive, or keep them moving.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, we will move to the next topic.
The next topic is about the environment, the environment, which we will again spend a maximum of 15 minutes on. The first question will be posed to Ms. Tackett. Ms. Tackett, with the pandemic forcing more and more events outside, what can be done to improve and expand on Georgetown's outdoor public spaces? You will again have 30 seconds to respond.
I'm going to have to get you to repeat that, please.
Okay. "With the pandemic forcing more and more events outside, what can be done to improve and expand on Georgetown's outdoor public spaces?"
Well, actually, Parks and Rec, our Parks and Recreation, they've been working on getting our parks opened. That is very important. I'm not so sure about the pool right now, but creating areas at the pavilion so that children can get out and, and do things like that, and creating our, for the children to get out and play at the parks safely, but they do need to, to get outside and get some sunshine. So I think that working on keeping our pavilion open so that those things can happen.
Would anyone else like to respond? Ms. Lesby Mitchell?
I serve on, on the board for the Friends of the Parks, and I know that they work every day to try to find ways to get things open. They won't look like they've looked in the past, but it's important that we do have the parks open. Many in, on city council, or several, have, have brought to our attention that perhaps this is a time when we should maybe cut the funds for the parks, because they're not bringing in as much money as they have in the past, and I think that the opposite is true.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to respond to that question? Mr. Stone?
One of the things that I think has really helped is the youth sports that have really opened up this fall, youth league football, soccer, and, and so on. And Parks and Rec has, they've done a really great job in making sure that things are marked so that social distancing does occur, and so I think that has, can't, I can't say enough good things about Parks and Rec and, and the work that they do.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to respond to that question?
May I respond if you wouldn't mind to repeat it? I'm sorry.
I can repeat it again.
Excuse me, you're, we, we were instructed to, to take our masks off when we respond to a question. Is it unreasonable to ask you to take your mask off when you state the question? Maybe, maybe you, maybe if you pulled your chairs back from the table and created some distance, it would be feasible for you to speak without a mask.
Again, because we are not six feet apart, we are going to try and keep our mask on to the best of our abilities, okay?
Okay, well, if you wouldn't mind to repeat the question, maybe I would respond.
Okay, I can. "With the pandemic forcing more and more events outside, what can be done to improve and expand on Georgetown's outdoor public spaces?"
What can be done to improve and, on and expand Georgetown's outdoor public spaces?
Yes, sir.
I have a strong opinion on that. We, Georgetown needs to encourage home, private spaces at home where people stay clo, and, and if they don't have land in their neighborhoods, where they actually produce something, which is an athletic exercise in itself, if you don't use machinery. And public spaces distract, have distracted people. I was distracted by playing football in high school, by Little League baseball, by all kinds of pub, of activity.
Unfortunately, your time has elapsed. We will now move on to our next question.
Just over a year ago, Georgetown suffered a major water drought, which caused us to rely on water from other cities. What can be done to, to prepare for another water shortage? Mr. Price?
Roof where I live in, in various locations since 1980, and for any public water, any local government to be selling water to the population and requiring by law that they buy the water is ridiculous, to say the least. It's, 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 if it's not criminal. And in fact, there is a Kentucky law which says no municipality in Kentucky can profit from, from its service.
Thank you, but your time has elapsed. Mr. Lesby?
Clean water is, is paramount to any community, and something that we did just last night is we passed funding for a comprehensive study to look at six different alternatives for solving any future water problems going forward, so you can hopefully rest easy knowing that that work is in the process.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak on the question?
As Mr. Lesby stated, we, city government right now is, is heavily involved in, in looking at alternative water sources, including purchasing water from outside the city of Georgetown. But to me, one of the most important issues that we have is, is we have to protect our primary water source at the present time to make sure that, as Mr. Lesby stated, that that the water continues to be clean and that we never have an issue with what hap, what's happened in Flint, Michigan.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Tackett?
Georgetown Municipal Water and Service Service do an outstanding job, and they have a great board, and they are constantly, they've given us a five-year plan, and as we move forward, they're going to give us another five-year plan to, to make sure that those things are taken care of. I just want to give Georgetown Municipal Water kudos, because they do a good job.
All right, we will now move on to the next question. Many of our city's water, oh, sorry, sorry, sorry.
That's right.
This one? Okay, sorry. Many of our city's water sources, such as the Elkhorn Creek and the Royal Spring, are heavily polluted. What can Georgetown City Council do to prevent water pollution within the city?
The question was, what can Georgetown do to prevent water pollution from what?
Within the city.
From?
Within the city.
Water pollution within the city?
Yes, sir. Mr. Lesby?
We have a very strong planning and zoning board here, and we have regulations that, that deal with just that issue, and there are, there are plenty of measures in place, silt fencing, there are water devices that capture water, they filter the water, they pull out the sediment, there, there are many steps in that process, so that is being addressed in this community.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Price?
You're talking about pollution of Elkhorn Creek, for example, correct?
Sorry, can you repeat that, sir? Can you repeat that?
Once again?
Can you repeat that, please?
Can, yeah, I'll repeat what I said. Your question, what can Georgetown do to prevent water pollution in the town? You're referring to the natural water flows such as Elkhorn Creek, right?
Yes, sir.
In my opinion, the most, I see, I walk across Elkhorn Creek, the bridge at, on Paris Pike frequently, I see boats with gasoline motors in Elkhorn Creek. In my opinion, that should be outlawed. Automobiles drain oil, they drain gasoline, brake fluid, all of which washes into the storm sewers, which then flow into Elkhorn Creek. And in my opinion, if we reduce mechanization, especially motor transport, we would go a long way toward reducing pollution of Elkhorn Creek. I will tell you, I picked up, I was walking.
Thank you. But your time has elapsed. Would anyone else like to answer this question? Okay.
We will now move on to our, to another question. Should Georgetown implement a curbside recycling program like many of the surrounding towns? Mr. Todd Stone?
That was one of the things that I did want to do is, is get these recycling programs going. However, the problem that we've ran into is one of the major buyers of recycling has quit buying. And even Lexington stopped buying the recyclables from Georgetown, paper, whatever. So we're still looking at ideas to find buyers for the recyclables, so.
Ms. Lesby Mitchell?
Of us currently use the recycling center that, where we take our things in. I'm one of those people, but curbside recycling to me is very important. I know that we are working currently with at least two companies to talk about using a private company to do just that. It would cost something, but the people that I've talked to have said that it would be worth the price.
Mr. Price?
I'm sorry. I recycle at home. I've been recycling at home since, ever since the mid 90s. And I have, first thing, if you want to recycle, you have to determine not to throw it away. And of course, if you don't throw it away, materials accumulate. But by having them at hand, you have to, you're almost forced to figure out what you can do with them. But if you throw them away, you'll never be forced, you'll never take.
Your time has elapsed. Yes, yes, sir. Would anyone else like to? Mr. Lesby?
I would say that there's not been a council member that hasn't supported curbside recycling. It's simply an economic issue. It's more expensive for us to recycle than it is to take it to the landfill. That's just the unfortunate reality. So as Tammy Lesby Mitchell said, we have been looking in it, into it, we are continuing to do so, but it's probably going to come with a cost.
Thank you.
Our next question. Do you plan on promoting green practices such as encouraging solar panels on roofs and shopping locally? Would anyone like to speak on the question? That's okay. Do you plan on promoting green practices such as encouraging solar panels on roofs and shopping locally? It's okay, I'll repeat it one more time. Do you plan on promoting green practices such as encouraging solar panels on roofs and shopping locally? Ms. Lesby Mitchell?
I would say that I do encourage people always to shop locally. Our town is, it's a beautiful town and it has a lot to offer and not just for people that live here, but for people who travel in. So that is something that I promote regularly.
Thank you. Mr. Lesby?
Absolutely, shopping locally has many benefits. The economic spend of that money comes back to the city and it gets recirculated throughout the economy here in Georgetown. But green practices, absolutely, and there are steps that we have in place through planning and zoning. We encourage certain components of landscaping to try to clean the environment like we were talking about earlier and just to improve the overall aesthetics of the community.
Thank you. Mr. Price? Did you want to speak on the topic?
Are you talking to me?
Yes.
I'm sorry, if you want me to respond, you're going to have to repeat it, I'm sorry.
That's okay, I just thought you raised your hand. Do you plan on promoting green practices such as encouraging solar panels on roofs and shopping locally?
Do I support green practices? Is that the, is that what you said?
Yes, sir.
Green practices such as what?
Such as encouraging solar panels on roofs and shopping locally.
Such as installing solar panels?
Yes, sir.
By, so, such as installing solar panels and buying locally? Do I support such measures?
Yes.
By, 100%. I don't know much about solar electricity, but not only buying locally, but my whole agenda is everybody produces locally. And although Tim Tulipson, the code enforcement director, has told me how proud he is that he buys everything at Kroger and he won't let me raise it home, if I get elected, that's going to change.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak on the question? All right, we will move on. We've heard the complaint of noise and light pollution from citizens. What can be done to remedy this burden on residents? Mr. Lesby?
Well, ironically, that's something we dealt with last night as well. It is an issue and we're going to look and see what other communities comparable to Georgetown are doing, the decibel level and maybe getting the decibel meter to, you know, to gauge that noise, but something probably does need to be done, certainly in the downtown area.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ms. Lesby Mitchell?
I would say I live one house off of Broadway, so I'm well acquainted with noise, especially from motor vehicles. And something that I encourage is for people to let me know and when they hear those kinds of things. And anytime I've turned something like that into the code enforcement people, they have come out and checked on it, checked on it. There are times when they have met with the owner of the automobile and had them remedy the situation. So encouraging people to come forward with those kinds of complaints is what I would.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to answer this question?
Bother you again, if you wouldn't mind to repeat it, maybe I would respond.
That's okay, sir. We've heard the complaint of noise and light pollution from citizens. What can be done to remedy this burden on residents?
What can be done to do what?
To remedy the burden of noise and light pollution from citizens.
About noise pollution, what can be done to reduce noise pollution?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. That is a major item on my agenda for being a candidate. Number one, walk. And if you could find a policeman who will read the laws, you can refer them to KRS 189.020, KRS 189.140, both of which require motor vehicles in the state of Kentucky to make a minimum of noise and to have effective working silencing equipment.
I'm so sorry, sir, your time has elapsed. Would anyone else like to answer this question?
We, we had a, an issue come up last night at our council meeting where we have asked our city attorney to do some research and see what neighboring communities are, how they're handling specifically the noise and what can be, you know, what are different solutions possibly? But in addition to that, you know, if we have a code enforcement office here in this community that can help work with those type issues and ultimately, law enforcement might have to get involved.
Thank you, sir. We will now move on to the next topic. The next topic is civic engagement and the first question is posed to Mr. Price. Mr. Price, in a time of record voter activity, how will you encourage voter registration and turnout during the next election cycle? You have 30 seconds to respond.
In a, in a time of, I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
In a time of record voter activity?
A time of what?
Record voter activity. The most voters we've ever had, how do you encourage voter registration?
How would I encourage voter what?
Registration.
Voter registration?
Yes, sir. Would anyone else like to respond?
Ms. Tackett?
Mrs. Tackett?
I encourage it on my Facebook, social media and also selling houses, people move in here, I always encourage them to register when they get moved into their new homes. And people that I run into, you know, I always ask them and I encourage young people to register because it's very important for them to have a vote.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak? Ms. Lesby Mitchell?
I would say that it's important to do things like we're doing tonight where you show up, when people ask you to come and talk about government, you show up, you take part, no matter where it is, within the city limits. Whenever I'm asked to go somewhere and meet with people, I go. And you show people that what they have to say matters and that they do have a voice.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Phil Walter?
Ms. Lesby Mitchell just stated, in addition to the fact that maybe other than freedom of speech, it's one of the greatest responsibilities that I believe we have as citizens of this country, is the right to vote. And we're already hearing and seeing record numbers of people getting out to vote in this current upcoming election and that's just something that has to happen. People have to participate, get informed and make decisions, irregardless of who you vote for, get out and vote.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak on the question?
On the response, may I respond now?
Yes.
If candidates will not be afraid to face the real issues and offer improvements to, through policies and legislation in the town council to improve life in Georgetown, if people, in other words, if people feel like they have a reason to vote because they, the town council is going to do something, then they will vote.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak on the question? All right. Next question. Many citizens of Georgetown have limited knowledge of local politics. How can we improve local voter education? Mr. Todd Stone?
One of the things that we can do is to, you know, attend, set up town hall meetings, go to different, go to different civic groups and attend their, their monthly meetings. One of the things that I personally have done is I have, I'm on the Boston Heritage Commission, I'm on the Scott County FFA Alumni Pro Group, various other groups, and speak to them and when you're out.
Thank you, sir. Would anyone else like to respond to this question? Ms. Tammy Mitchell?
I would say that it's very important to listen. It's very important to get out of your own neighborhood and to get out of your own group, you know, to see people from all sides of the, of the city and listen to what, what they need and learn a lot about what their culture is like and then, and what they need from their city council. But you won't get it if you stay in your own house and on your own street.
Thank you.
May I ask you to repeat the question?
Yes, sir. Many citizens of Georgetown have limited knowledge of local politics. How can we improve local voter education?
Many citizens in Georgetown are, what about local politics?
Have limited knowledge of local politics.
How can you improve voter education? Read the news graphic and encourage, support the news graphic, encourage them to read the news graphic.
Thank you, sir.
We will now move on to our next question. Seeing as it is projected that young people will be the largest voting bloc this election cycle, why should young people vote for you?
I'll take one.
Ms. Tackett?
For me, living in this community, I wanted to leave it for the best that's yet to come. It's important to me for our community to be a place to raise our children and grandchildren and raise up young people to take the place of us, to grow you up in the way to go. So it's important that you vote for us so we can encourage you all to vote for other people because vote is your right and you should have a voice. And I want to be that person to encourage that.
Mr. Price?
If I had a child, raised, raised a child here in Georgetown, I have no children. But here in Georgetown, I have a child elsewhere who stays with her mother. But if I had that child here in Georgetown, I would do everything I could to lead that child into, into crop work at home because it's boundless employment, gainful employment is a bedrock need.
I'm sorry, sir, but your time has elapsed. Would anyone else like to respond to this question? Mr. Lesby?
Having three daughters of my own, that's certainly an inspiration behind many of the activities that I'm involved with and the decisions that we make. We think about the youth and young people in the community, we talk about it at the council level all the time, the decisions we're making for Parks and Recreation, how important they are to keep, keep kids active. We spend a lot of money on the parks in many different neighborhoods and to us, that's extremely important. It's money that's well invested in the community.
Mr. Stone?
For 16 years, I was a school resource officer within the school system here and one of the biggest things that I encouraged kids to do was to get involved. It didn't matter what, sports, academics, different clubs, but get involved and the more they're involved, the more they will grow and a well-rounded kid becomes a well-rounded adult. So it was just, it's flat encourage them to get, get involved in something and that will help them grow.
Thank you.
We will now move on to our next question.
Would you like to respond to that question, Ms. Lesby Mitchell?
I would, it's a very important one. Thank you for extending that for a second. Praise God for the young people. You know, they give me hope for the future. Young people, they don't see prejudice, they're wide open to ideas, to people from all walks of life and it's an inspiration to me to watch them in action.
Sure.
Or do you need to move on?
No, you can still respond to that question too.
Ms. Lesby Mitchell is absolutely correct. I mean, to be quite honest, and it's hard to see that in the audience or I don't know who's watching from home, but your generation are the next leaders of this country, the next leaders of the city, the state, this country. And it's very important that we all listen before we speak and be supportive of any concerns that regardless if you're 18 years old, voting for the first time or 65 years old.
Thank you for y'all's responses. Our next question.
Spoke the question or said something, was it a question or, could you repeat what you said, please?
We just said thank you for your speaking and we're going to move on to the next question. Question four. Student Y, our club, is a civic engagement and community service-based club. What advice do you have for teens who can't vote but still want to be? What advice do you have for teens who can't vote but still want to be civically engaged? Ms. Tackett?
I would absolutely encourage you to check in to do a junior leadership Scott County. As, as an adult, I'm getting ready to do that. In fact, it got shut down because of COVID. But I've talked to many of my peers and people, my mentors, and they say that it's one of the best things you can do to learn about Georgetown Scott County. So I would highly encourage you to do that and get involved, like in the hospitals, medical missions, things like, like that, you know, volunteer in that respect and maybe even check into.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to respond to the question? Ms. Lesby Mitchell?
I would say, I was in coed Y, which is what it was called when I was in high school. And we had, we had opportunity to go and watch city council in action. And last year, when we were passing the fairness ordinance, we had some students from the high school that came out and watched and took part. Just because you can't vote doesn't mean you can't have an opinion and you can't get on the public comments. So get involved, come out. And one other thing that I would say is read. Read from all kinds of different backgrounds and, and you'll learn some.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to respond to the question?
Wouldn't mind to repeat it.
Okay. I'll repeat the question and then after that, you have thirty seconds to respond. Student Y, our club, is a civic engagement and community service-based club. What advice do you have for teens who can't vote but still want to be civically engaged?
What advice would I have for citizens who can't vote?
Who are not old enough.
Once again?
What advice would you have for teens who aren't old enough to vote but still want to be civically engaged?
They're old enough to vote, but what?
They're not old enough to vote, but they would still like to be involved.
Not old enough to vote, what advice would I have for citizens not old enough to vote, but, but how to, but who want to be involved?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes.
My advice would be, raise a garden.
Thank you. Mr. Showalter?
Can I cut you off?
No, that's perfect. Thank you.
My son was in the Y Club at Scott County High School just a few years ago. Before he started in the Y Club, he, he was very active, but politics was something he really didn't care a whole lot about. As he, as my wife and I tried to instill in him, you know, watch the news, read the newspaper, ask questions. If you've got a question of a US Senator, sit down and write a letter to that US Senator or a US Representative or a cit-
Thank you. But your time has elapsed. Thank you. Would anyone else like to respond to the question? All right, we will move to the next question. Next question. How should the city assist people, especially the elderly community, in getting to the polls?
I can assure you that we, as a council, we do care about our elderly and we fund along with the county, the Senior Citizens Center. And there's also many volunteers that go there and they will deliver meals and be involved, go to nursing homes, visit, those kinds of things because they don't have anybody. A lot of church members do that. There'll be a group of people that'll go visit and they love children and they love little.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to answer this question? Mrs. Tammy Mitchell?
I have taken senior citizens to the polls to vote. We do, as Connie said, we do support our, our civic organizations in town that cater to the elderly. And I know that they ta, they have transportation, that, that is used just specifically for those kinds of things.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Repeat the question, please.
Of course, sir. How should the city assist people, especially the elderly community, in getting to the polls?
How, something about elderly people?
How should the city assist people in getting to the polls?
How can the city assist?
People.
People?
In getting to the polls.
People in what?
Getting to the polls.
In what? Getting to the polls, getting to vote. How can the city assist elderly get to, 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 to vote? Is that, is that the question?
Yes, sir.
I'm, I won't waste your time because that's something I haven't thought about. I'm sorry. Thank you.
What, um, Mr. Lesby?
Even if the city can't provide direct transportation, we, we have a lot of community partners that could. So I would encourage them to reach out to the city, call City Hall and let us help them get connected with, with one of the organizations that we have a relationship with.
Thank you.
We will now move on to our next question. The next question will be asked to every candidate on the stage. And this comes from our club president, Landon Stadnik. He asks, seeing as youth is the future of Georgetown, if elected, would you commit to broadening youth input in city government? I will start with Mr. Stone.
Say that one more time.
So our club president, Landon Stadnik, he asked, seeing as the youth is the future of Georgetown, if elected, would you commit to broadening youth input in city government?
Absolutely. Because the kids of today are tomorrow's leaders. If we don't help, help them along the way, then we do a great disservice to the kids of today, to the youth of today. So we have to get them involved in some form or fashion of the governmental process.
Thank you. Mr. Price, would you like to respond to that question?
If you'll repeat it, please.
I can repeat it.
Thank you.
Seeing as youth is the future of Georgetown, if elected, would you commit to broadening youth input in city government?
If I were elected, would I commit to doing what?
Broadening youth input in city government.
Broadening youth?
Input in city government.
Youth input?
Yes, sir.
Into local government?
Yes, sir.
Frankly, frankly, I, I, I've, I've, I've not thought of that. I'm sorry.
That's fine. Ms. Tackett?
Absolutely. I would love to see the youth involved and have a, have a voice. And I think that we could probably learn something from you all. So absolutely.
Mr. Lesby?
An easy one, yes, absolutely. That's why we're here tonight and we appreciate what y'all are doing. Thank you.
Mr. Showalter?
Yes, if I can add on to what Mrs. Tackett stated, I strongly encourage, whether it's the Y Club or any other organization here at this high school or Scott County High School, to get involved. And it's up to us to listen. And I think we could learn a lot from your generation and hopefully you can learn something from us, but I probably doubt that. So, yes.
Ms. Lesby Mitchell?
Absolutely. I would be committed to that. Anytime people want to learn more about government, they're welcome to come to city council meeting. They can call. I know anyone up here on this stage, if they called us and asked us to come speak to a class, show them the ropes, explain something, we're all available anytime.
Thank you. We will now move on to our next topic.
The next topic is public relations and affairs, which we will again spend a maximum of fifteen minutes on. The first question is posed to Mrs. Lesby Mitchell. Mrs. Lesby Mitchell, one of the biggest issues in Georgetown is the funding and salaries of first responders. How will you address the underfunding of these departments? You have thirty seconds to respond.
I will make sure that we put in place some sustainable revenue streams that address these problems. We took one step already. It was a first step. We've made promises to our first responders to hang in there, that we are behind them a hundred percent and that we will put things into place that are not one-time fixes but sustainable. They're, they're the most important people in the community.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to respond? Mr. Toddstone?
To the, the police and the fire department, as well as the dispatchers, which this, this city would be lost without, because I have been there with them. They most certainly deserve the money that they, they have, we, we brought forth. We need to get sustainable, a constant flow of revenue into the city so that we can provide that.
I'm so sorry, sir. Your time has elapsed. Mrs. Tackett?
Excuse me. I just want to reiterate what Ms. Lesby said, but also to let you know that being on the finance committee, that I have promised our first responders that we're going to move on to our second step and look at what we need to do to have sustainable revenue in order to bring our, our first responders up to where their salaries need to be and bring in the manpower. It is absolutely vital that we do that and I'm committed to, to help do that.
Thank you. Would anyone, Mr. Lesby?
Likewise, I'm part of the same finance committee. We're, we're all a part of the finance committee when you're on city government. But that is the most important issue that, that we're dealing with is, is trying to bring up the pay for emergency responders. And not just the pay, but bringing up the, the horsepower, the manpower, the, the lady power, however you want to say it. But we're all committed to that. And Tammy said it right, we've got to have revenue streams to do that. And those are some of the things that we have been working on and we're going to continue to work on.
Thank you. Would anyone else, would anyone else like to, Mr. Showalter?
The smallest step back in late September in addressing, as, as Mrs. Tackett stated, the first step in this process of, of trying to make an adjustment in, in that first step of the process and getting the, the pay up to where it needs to be. It's not the only step, but it was the first step. So it's, it's not just about looking down the road at revenue streams to try to, to take that second step, but it's also looking at every item in the current budget and looking to see.
Thank you, sir. Would anyone else like to respond to this question? With that, we'll move to the next question.
The next question is, would you support a tax hike to increase the number of first responder jobs in the city? Mr. Price?
The, the news graphic reported some months ago about the, the, the survey that was done and comparing Georgetown to so-called peer cities. I wrote a letter to Mayor Prather. I, I haven't finished it yet. He doesn't have it. I said, Mayor Prather said in, in, in the news, told the news graphic that he concluded from the report, storm sewers are the number two most expensive item. If Georgetown would re-vegetate and re, and reforest, there'd be no need for storm.
I'm sorry, but your time has elapsed. Who else would like to respond to this question? Mr. Showalter?
This current city council has taken two steps just within the past thirty to, thirty to forty-five days. We made a nine-one-one fee and that fee passed by a vote to eight to zero from the city council, eight to zero. Last night, we voted to make a very, very small adjustment in the property tax rate for the city of Georgetown. That, that motion or that ordinance passed last night by a vote of five to three.
Thank you. Mr. Stone?
To continue with what Mark was saying, we are taking steps. And to do, nobody wants to raise taxes because even sitting on council, that doesn't get us out of paying those taxes as well. But being fiscally responsible, once that money comes in and not frivolously spending it in, in making sure that we are fiscally responsible and moving forward as good stewards of the city and.
Would anyone else like to respond? Mr. Lesby?
It's, it's a good question and it's a challenging issue, but we are, we're committed. The, the group that's in place right now anyway has taken some of those steps. The harsh reality is, ten years ago, we had two-hundred-and-forty employees in the city of Georgetown. Today, in the fastest-growing community in the state, we only have two-hundred employees. That's a huge reduction, huge cost savings. Now we have to go the other way. We've got to catch up. And in order to do that, we're going to have to raise revenue. It's the only way to deal with the issue.
Thank you. To move on to our next question. What do you believe is the cause of increased crime in recent years in Georgetown?
You, could you please repeat it?
Since we're running short on time, I can repeat it one more time, but that, that'll be it. What do you believe is the cause of increased crime in recent years in Georgetown?
What do I believe is the ca, cause of what?
Increased crime.
Increased crime.
In recent years.
Increased crime in Georgetown. Is that correct?
Yes. What do you believe is the cause?
May I respond?
Yes.
In my opinion, it's the influx of strangers. People who've moved to Georgetown because of Toyota and the, the, the big money that's in Georgetown, but they don't know the laws. They don't know the way of life in Georgetown. And they come from, a lot of them are from eastern Kentucky and, and they have no intention, they don't have no intention to comply with the law. They don't know the law and they have no intention. And they, they, they resist. If you tell them what the law is, they don't want to hear it.
Unfortunately, your time has elapsed. Ms. Tackett?
I'm probably only going to hit on like a small portion of it, but a lot of it is drugs and drug usage and drug sales. The pandemic hasn't helped that at all. Nobody wants to be a drug addict, but when they are and they become one, that's the only thing that they focus on. So that's when you, the crime rises, the robbery rises, sometimes domestic violence, children neglect. Those are, that is one area that does cause higher crime everywhere, not just here.
Thank you. Mr. Showalter?
Several different factors. I think as Mrs. Tackett stated, you know, it could be drugs. Could be the fact that we're, we've got two major interstates running through Scott County. Easy access on, easy access off. Could be the COVID, COVID-related. So irregardless of what's causing it, we have to do everything we can to reduce it and ultimately eliminate it. And that means giving our.
Unfortunately, your time has elapsed. Thank you for your response. Would anyone else? Mr. Stone?
And to piggyback off Mark, we do need to give the, the first responders, more specifically the police department, the, the total support that we're behind them. And we are, we do have two major interstates. We are halfway between Florida and Michigan. That's, with this crossroads, that's, that's something that's always been in law enforcement community that we are at the halfway point and there's a lot of drugs that go up and down I-75.
Unfortunately, your time has elapsed. Thank you for your response. We will now move on to the next question. Do you believe there is an inequality issue in Georgetown? And if so, what? I will repeat it one more time.
Peer, I think that's why I'm not hearing.
Do, what is it? If Georgetown has a.
An inequality issue.
Mm-hmm.
Are we talking about racial inequality?
Any.
Any.
What, what do you think it is?
We, 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 people marched in Georgetown on the streets on Main Street after the, the death of Rodney King to indicate their perception that, that we do have racial inequality. And I agree. And I, I have a lot of black friends that I wouldn't be without. I rely on them, maybe as many as I do white friends. And one reason I get along with black people is because they do manual labor. I do manual labor. If white people.
I'm sorry, sir. Your time has elapsed. Would anyone else like, Mrs. Tackett? I'm sorry, sir, your time has elapsed. Would anyone else like, Mrs. Tackett?
I don't want to sit here and, and say that there's not, because I'm pretty sure that there is. I love all people, and I've taught my children to do that. It doesn't matter who they are. But if I were to guess, I would say that Black Lives Matter, the Fairness Act matters, everybody should have the, the fair right to live equally with everybody, should have the same job as anybody if they qualify for it, have the right to live anywhere.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to, Mrs., sorry, Mrs. Tammy Mitchell?
Yes, I believe there is inequality in some parts of Georgetown. Last year, when we addressed the fairness ordinance, we heard from people from all over town. We heard from people from both sides of the issue. And while we may not see it ourselves, we did, we do hear about instances, and I was very proud that we were able to work through those and pass a fairness ordinance. As far as Black Lives Matter, that movement, I haven't seen it as much in Georgetown, but it is a national problem, and it's one that we all need to pay attention to.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to, Mr. Toddstone?
In years past, as school resource officer, I've heard a lot of, there was racial inequality along the lines of the fairness ordinance. But what needs to happen is, there has been an open dialogue started. It does not need to stop. It needs to be continued and to address it and not just go, okay, we'll just push this off to the side for a minute and we'll talk about it some more.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to respond? Oh, sorry, Mr. Lesby?
Sorry. I'd have to say that there probably is inequality in, in this community, probably in every community. But one thing that I'm very proud of, to say, is that I've, I've never seen that from the council's perspective or anyone in city government. I'm very proud of the position that, that our government and our city takes. I haven't seen any discrimination from, from that perspective. And I'm, I'm very also proud to have supported the fairness ordinance to, to deal with that issue.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to respond before we move to the next question?
This will be the last question of this topic. With the Amen House giving food to, giving food out to over 1,200 people during their food drive, how should the city council address food insecurity? I can repeat that. With the Amen House giving food out to over 1,200 people during their food drive, how should the city council address food insecurity? Mr. Price?
Home horticulture. Home and neighborhood horticulture, community gardening. I founded the community garden program in Georgetown for the very reason to, to assure or to, to try to assure food security.
Ms. Tackett?
I'm going to be real quick down the road. I'm going to promote Amen House's Boots to Baskets. They're a drive right now, and you can be a member. It's as low as twenty, $240 to $5,000. They'll take all donations. When you go to Kroger, pick up a bag, put it in the Amen House thing, call them. But, and we also support the Amen House. And when I did the Boots to Basket, I called a friend and I called my church and asked my church to donate as well. So call your friends.
Mr. Stone?
One of the things that, that I am very happy to be a, a part of is the FFA, Scott County FFA alumni, and every year they have their own student food drive. And each year, the kids surpass the year before. And now that it's split into two schools, it is phenomenal. The, the kids really come out and collect cans, canned food to support it. I think the last, last known, the last amount I knew...
Unfortunately, your time has elapsed. Mr. Lesby, would you like to respond?
I was just going to say, we, we do support those groups, the Amen House, Elizabeth's Village, Gathering Place, and Salvation Army. There's, there's several that, that we have committed to, and we use their broad reach to, to try to help folks in this community. The senior citizens, one, we, we just helped last night, as a matter of fact.
Would anyone else like to respond to the question? We will move on to the next topic. The next topic is development. And the fir-, and the first question will be posed to Mr. Lesby. It is no doubt that Georgetown and Scott County is the fastest growing county in the state of Kentucky, and by 2040, it is projected that almost 100,000 people will be living in the county. How will you help Georgetown keep up with the rapid population and economic growth?
It's a good question, and it's, it's, it's a good issue. The key to growth in this community is the comprehensive plan. And the comprehensive plan is the community's plan. The community comes together every five years, and they build and put together this plan. They determine where growth is going to take place throughout the community. That plan then goes to the city council for approval. It goes to the fiscal court for approval and to the planning zoning office for approval. So there's a wonderful plan in place. We abide by that plan, and because of it...
Thank you. Mr. Price?
Problem is that the, the town government does not comply with the comprehensive plan. Code enforcement of the town of Georgetown steps all over and ignores not only the comprehensive plan, but similar laws pro-vegetation. A big part of the comprehensive plan is in support of natural vegetation in Scott County. But the Georgetown code enforcement ignores not only the comprehensive plan, but ordinance 06-027, which specifically repeals the law knowing requirement and recommends tree...
Your time has elapsed. Ms. Tackett?
I'd just like to piggyback on what Mr. Lesby said. In that comprehensive plan, in every five years, every five years, they look at what's going on, and they improve and make sure our infrastructures, there's a plan to go by, and all of the developers go there, and that's what they, they go by. And it's, it's pretty comprehensive, and it's, it's huge. But it, it's a great one. He really explained it well.
Would anyone else like to respond? Ms. Lesby Mitchell?
I would say that the comprehensive pla- plan is the place to start, but it is our job as city council people to, every single year, to look at our budget and to look at our resources and to make sure that with the growth that we do, keep the infrastructure in place and the quality of life in place. And that is a responsibility that does fall upon us and that we need to take seriously.
Mr. Showalter?
I think we have to be honest. In addition to the comprehensive plan that Mr. Lesby, Mrs. Tackett, and Mrs. Lesby Mitchell have discussed, we, we really have to be honest in the fact that the growth is causing some pretty significant short-term and long-term challenges for our school system, our county government, and our city government. And at some point, we have to get back to developing a proactive approach on, on our infrastructure needs within this...
Thank you. Thank you. We will now move on to our next question.
How do you feel about our public transportation options currently available in our city? Ms. Tackett?
I'm going to touch on it lightly. We have a couple of trans buses that go around right, right now, the red one and the blue one, and they do really well. It's a start. It's, it's taken a long time to get there, and there's room to grow there. But again, that takes financing. But we do have a start on it, and I'm thankful for that.
Mr. Price?
Any motor transport, it seduces people, including public transport, seduces people away from their own homes and their own neighborhoods where they could be producing whatever it is, they're climbing into a motor vehicle, including a bus, to go by. And my, my agenda is to promote home and neighborhood horticulture so that people don't need trans, motor transport of any kind, including public transport.
Mr. Stone?
And, and I do know that it, it, again, it all boils down to money, but one of the things that I would like to see is to expand it more into the north end of town, more so out into the Colony Derby Estates area so that it can be more taken advantage of. That would also allow those that want to get to the different parts out, out there, Bywater, the schools, the county park, whatever the case may be. So would like to see it expanded.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak on the question? All right, we'll move to the next question. Question, oh, sorry. Should Georgetown focus more on developing new subdivisions and commercial spaces or revitalizing existing homes and storefronts? Sorry. Should Georgetown focus more on developing new subdivisions and commercial spaces or revitalizing existing homes and storefronts? Mr. Lesby?
I think that we need to do both, quite honestly. I think both practices are beneficial to the community. I know for a fact that if you don't have the residential growth in a community, you're not going to have the commercial growth. And the commercial growth is where a lot of the revenue is generated for the city. And there, there is quite a bit of redevelopment going on. It's called infield. We certainly promote that. That's part of what the comprehensive plan deals with as well. So anyway, my answer would be both.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to respond? Oh, sorry, Mr. Stone?
One of the things that currently is going on is the community block grant for the, the Boston area on the north end of Georgetown, in which it was a, a sizable grant, I believe it was a $10,000 grant or more. Seven, thank you, sir, I'm glad you were finance committee at work there. $750,000 to go into the older, older part of Georgetown to revitalize...
I'm sorry, your time has elapsed. Would anyone else like to respond to this?
If you wouldn't mind to repeat the question?
I'll repeat the question one more time. Should Georgetown focus more on developing new subdivisions and commercial spaces or revitalizing existing homes and storefronts?
May I respond?
Yes, sir.
It does not make sense to neglect an existing house. And the code, Kim Thompson, the code enforcement director, told me last summer that he intended to demolish 60 houses. That was not only all in Georgetown, but in Scott County. A lot of them were in Georgetown, and a lot of them have been demolished. If, if Madison, Wisconsin does not allow a vacant house to, to fall out of service, they, Madison, Wisconsin puts a house into reci-
I'm sorry, sir, your time has elapsed. Mrs. Tackett?
I just want to respond real quick and just for code enforcement's sake, to let you know that our code enforcement does a really good job. I sat on that code enforcement committee to get that going. It had to have some teeth in order to be able to go and revitalize and do what needed to be done. He doesn't, they don't do it in a mean way. They go through a process. There's a process we do, and it's a good process. Sometimes it doesn't make everybody happy, but it, it's something that has helped, and it does help our community.
Thank you. Would anyone like to respond to this? Sorry, Mrs. Tammy Mitchell?
I would say what David Joseph said. It is very important for both. I, I live in a house that was built in 1897. I think that the downtown area of Georgetown is vital to the success of our town. And all those buildings there are historic and beautiful and, and very important. The growth outside, it's important as well, but it needs to be planned growth, and, and we need to pay close attention.
Thank you. We will now move on to the next question.
With a limited budget, how should the city council prioritize projects within Georgetown? Ms. Tackett?
Well, we've already done that, actually. We, as a finance committee, we've looked at, we'll put them in a row, and there's like six of them. So out of the six, we picked the two, and the two that we picked to budget those items and pay cash for was the nine-one-one system that we split with the county and also developing the Lanes Run Business Park to finish that out so that we can bring in more business.
Thank you. Yes, I can. With a limited budget, how should the city council prioritize projects within Georgetown?
How should the, how should the city council prioritize what?
Projects within Georgetown.
What within Georgetown?
Projects.
Projects. What, what was the first part of the question?
With a limited budget, how should the city council prioritize projects within Georgetown?
With a, with a limited budget?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Ms. Lesby Mitchell?
I'd say that it is the responsibility of every council member to look at our budget and to understand what goes behind each line item, because there is a limited amount of money available, and there are limitless people asking for it and projects that need doing. And so it is our responsibility, not just the finance committee's responsibility, to understand every line item in, within the budget.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to respond? Mr. Showalter?
Sorry. We have a very, very good finance committee of Mr. Lesby and Mrs. Tackett, as well as a very knowledgeable mayor and finance director of this city. And we have been prioritizing projects for multiple years. What I would strongly encourage, irregardless if I'm here after next Tuesday or not, is that we not make knee-jerk reactions and act on emotion and, and think things through before we act. And that includes listening before you speak.
Thank you. Mr. Price?
You read the question for me, and now I'll respond. Mayor, as I said earlier, Mayor Prather says that the number one urgent, most urgent project is, is most demanding on the budget is payroll. Number two is storm sewers. I'm going to repeat. If the mayor and, and the town of Georgetown would order reforestation, re-vegetation, there would be no need for storm sewers. All that money could go to the payroll. Indians, the American Indians didn't have storm sewers because they didn't have pavement.
We will now move on to our next question. We are now going to move on to our next question.
How will you work with the Georgetown Scott County Chamber of Commerce to keep up with the growing retail demand? Ms. Tackett?
Actually, I sit on governmental affairs of the Chamber of Commerce, and I'm sure there's several of us here that do. Our director is very active in what he does, and he brings us a, a lot of knowledge and information for us to be able to work with him and with the community leaders to move, move Scott County and Georgetown forward. I don't know if I got the rest of your question?
Just to keep up with the growing retail demand?
He does. He does a great job and brings it to our attention.
Ms. Lesby Mitchell?
Every city council member gets a membership with the Chamber of Commerce, and most of us go to their monthly functions. And at that time, the new businesses that are coming to town or planning to come to town are invited to give a speech and introduce what it is that they bring to the community. And in that way, we can get to know the new people that come in. We also take part in the comprehensive plan, where we decide what kinds of, where we can grow business and so forth. So those are ways that we do participate.
Anyone else?
Maybe, if you don't mind to repeat it.
One more time.
How will you work with the Georgetown Scott County Chamber of Commerce to keep up with the growing retail demand?
To be involved with what?
To keep up with the growing retail demand.
To keep up with what?
The growing retail demand.
The growing, growing retail demand. How, how can the town government keep up with growing retail demand?
Yes.
Again, maybe, I hope I'm, I'm repeating myself, encourage home horticulture to reduce retail demand because... retail demand because people can raise at home and in their own neighborhoods what they buy from the retail stores.
Next question? Okay. What should be done to increase the tourism draw of historic Georgetown? Mr. Stone?
I don't know that we, honestly, Lori Saunders and her crew at Tourism do a phenomenal job. Um, with any event that goes on in Georgetown Scott County, they are promoting it. Um, they are constantly traveling, trying to bring in new and exciting events. So, you know, um, the only thing I can do is to keep, that I can think of is just to keep supporting them and to encourage them to do the, the great-
Thank you. Mr. Price?
About, to, to, the question's about tourism, right?
Yes, sir.
Could you repeat it, please?
Yes, sir. What should be done to increase the tourism draw of historic Georgetown?
Something about historic Georgetown, the tourism, could you repeat? I'm sorry. It, it should, 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 what is the tourism draw about historic Georgetown?
I'll repeat the question one more time. What should be done to increase the tourism draw of historic Georgetown?
If you, I, I'll respond if I may. Tourism is a losing proposition because mobility distracts people from handiness. If people stay home and use their hands, they can produce something. If they climb in a bus, a tour bus, and go driving away, they're not going to produce anything.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to respond to that question? Mr. Shaw Walter?
This year's kind of been the exception to the rule with COVID-19. So, you, again, this, this, this year's really, you, you got to take this year out. As Mr. Stone mentioned, we, we have a great Tourism Board here in Georgetown Scott County that promote Georgetown and Scott County at every turn, every single day, of different events that are held throughout this community at different times of the year, bringing people in to stay in our hotels, bringing, bringing people in-
Thank you. Would anyone else like to? Mr. Lesby?
Just to echo on what I'm hearing from some of the other council members, is to continue to support Lori Saunders and, and her Outstanding Board. They do a phenomenal job. The Horsey 100 is, is an event that brings in literally thousands of people. Um, and one other thing that I've mentioned in years past would be to, to improve the landscaping and signage out on the interstate. We have a, a flow of traffic going up and down I-75, and I, I think if we were to beautify that area, that might help pull people off the interstate, and they might spend more money here and circulate through the community.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to respond to this question? Alright, for our last question of the moderated sec, or of this section. With Toyota Manufacturing of Kentucky investing billions of dollars into Georgetown, how should the city convince TMMK to continue their investments? Ms. Lesby Mitchell?
I would say that Toyota is a blessing to Georgetown. They're great corporate citizens. They're involved in just about every aspect of life in Georgetown. It's, um, they have a very close personal relationship with our mayor, with our county judge executive, with our school board leaders, and uh, they are committed. They're the kind of corporate citizen that any town would be proud to have.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to respond to the question?
Hey, if you, I may, I may respond if you don't mind to repeat it. I'm sorry.
How should the city of Georgetown convince Toyota Manufacturing of Kentucky to continue their investments in the city?
How can the town of Georgetown do something in regard to Toyota manufacturing, did you say?
Yes. How should Georgetown convince Toyota to continue their investments in the city?
I would tell, I would plan, tell, my number one item on, on my agenda for getting elected is pedestrianism. And if I get elected, I would say Toyota, prepare to reduce production because there's going to be less demand. And if Georgetown sets the example that demand would, could, could, the, the decrease in demand for motor transport could spread worldwide, in my opinion should. Pedestrians can produce something. You don't produce anything at a steering wheel.
Would anyone else like to respond? Ms. Tackett?
I was just going to quickly respond that as a council, when we're brought things from the economic development, a lot of times it's to give tax incentives when they're hiring new employees and when they're starting up to build new cars. And so, we create a partnership with them, and we do that with them, so that we invest in them as much as they invest in us.
Thank you. Mr. Lesby?
To echo what Connie is saying, they're, they're the best corporate partner you could ask for in the country, and we've been blessed to have them here in Georgetown. And they are our partner. We work together on many things. The business park, if it wasn't for Toyota, we wouldn't be able to get the business park off the ground. That's been a collaborative effort that's brought in education, it's brought in BCTC, and it's brought in other industries that have created jobs that, to help benefit this community. There are many other things. We certainly don't have enough time, but anyway, continue the partnership.
Thank you all for this lively debate. Now, we will be moving on to questions from the general public. The first question comes from Olivia Huffman, a junior at Scott County High School. Olivia asks, what are your plans to make our city more accessible to those with disabilities? Each candidate will have 45 seconds to respond. We will move from left to right across the stage, starting with Mr. Stone.
Could you repeat that one more time?
What are your plans to make our city more accessible to those with disabilities?
I think, yes. I think that uh, with our, with Code Enforcement and with our City Engineers Office, which Eddie Hightower and Brennan do a, a great job, that uh, the city has moved forward and working with the state along with um getting the sidewalks prepared. Uh, I know that uh, the tra, new traffic ordinance that's coming out has a whole lot of new uh guidelines for handicap parking and uh issues along that nature, so.
Mr. Price?
Could, could you please repeat the question?
What are your plans to make our city more accessible to those with disabilities?
What is, uh, my plan to make our town more accessible to people with disabilities?
Yes.
Correct? Thank you. Let me, let me, uh, I haven't thought about that. But, thank you.
That's okay. Ms. Tackett?
We're actually working on a traffic ordinance right now, and it's going to have in there um handicap accessibility. So, we are in the process of doing that.
Thank you. Mr. Lesby?
Um, one of the grants that we recently received, I believe, was the Build Grant, if I'm not mistaken. And that was another grant that's in the $700,000 range, which is similar to the one Todd, that we were talking about just a little while ago. But that grant is going to revitalize part of Main Street as well. It's going to improve the, the sidewalks. It's going to improve signage, uh, lighting, several different aspects that will benefit folks that are handicapped as well.
Thank you. Mr. Shaw, Shaw Walter?
I just want to reiterate what my three colleagues have said here to my right, that, you know, we, we need to continue to invest in sidewalk repairs, better lighting, as Mr. Lesby just stated. Uh, you know, looking to add handicap accessible parking where, or when and where we can, and, you know, in listening to what other needs there are and in addressing those as well.
Ms. Lesby Mitchell?
Yes, I would say that um, we are on this and that it is an important issue. Um, and I have found in my first two years as a City Councilperson that anytime we have a request from a, a citizen, that we can work with our city engineer, and that they are very, very responsive. Um, they're, they're, they meet with people all the time to try to make things better. Um, and it, it is something that we do uh pay close attention to.
Thank you.
The next question comes from a member of the community. They ask, what do you wish to accomplish as a City Councilmember? Each candidate will again have 45 seconds to respond. Mr. Stone?
One of the, you know, and again, most everything comes down to money, but one of the big things that I want to see is uh the recycling program uh to expand and to get to point where it is curbside recycling. I'd like to see that come in as well.
Mr. Price?
I'm sorry, I'm gonna, could you please repeat the question?
I will repeat the question one more time.
Thank you.
What do you wish to accomplish as a City Councilmember?
What do I wish to accomplish as a City Councilmember?
Yes, sir.
What I wish to accomplish is to lead Georgetown away from motor transport toward local production of food, fiber, timber, crops. So that we, people become productive with their hands and, and with no, with no machinery if possible, gradually doing away with machinery in favor of hand tools, so that people become physically fit, healthy, and self-sufficient, rather than motorist consumers. There's a lot of pressure on people in Georgetown because of Toyota especially, to be motorist consumers. That is, to get in the car-
Unfortunately, your time has elapsed. Ms. Tackett?
I would like to continue to um help our first responders, our police, our fire, add to that, that bot, that embodiment there, warm bodies that we need uh to keep our cities safe. Um, all first responders, and also our city employees, they work very hard. We still have the same amount of city employees, and we're still 60,000. They work hard and they're dedicated. I would like to make sure that that's done. And then the other four projects that are on our list that we would somehow try to raise capital funds to revitalize City Hall, we need to do Lexus Way, and we need to work on Oxford Road. Those are huge ones, and it takes financing, and they're constantly right there um trying to figure out-
Thank you. Mr. Lesby?
Um, I want to help the city continue to navigate through this COVID-related economic slowdown. And we had um a comprehensive study that was done just prior to the COVID slowdown or shutdown that we were hoping to implement. Uh, that was halted because of the situation that we're in. But we, we're going to have to address the, the shortfall in staffing with certainly the Police Department and Public Works is, is somewhat short-staffed as well. We've got to get their pay comparable to what our other peer cities are paying. Otherwise, we're going to continue to lose some of the best workforce that we have. That's, that's imperative as well. Um, I want to continue to clean up Georgetown. You, you don't re-
Thank you. Mr. Shaw Walter?
We've, we've got to continue to work on curbside recycling and get that program in place. We've got infrastructure needs that have got to be addressed. Roads, street lighting, sidewalks, traffic signals, et cetera. We've got to deal with the second and final step of getting our pay for our first responders and all of our city employees to where it needs to be. And then we have to look at it and develop a plan on adding police officers and firefighters and 911 dispatchers in this community.
Ms. Lesby Mitchell?
What do I hope to accomplish on the City Council? I got into this because I like to serve. It was important to me that every single citizen have a voice. And uh, some of the things that I've tried to help put into place were the fairness ordinance, um, and, and ideas where we get, we get feedback from all parts of the community. It's a complicated issue, and it's a heavy lift, uh, the, the kinds of decisions that we have to make. But if we work together and listen to one another and learn more about how things work, um, I would like to leave the city a better place than I found it.
Thank you.
The next question comes from a member of the community. The question is, do you think Georgetown should work with surrounding? With surrounding communities? And if so, how? I apologize. I will repeat the question. Do you think Georgetown should work with surrounding communities? And if so, how? Mr. Stone?
Well, we, our Police Department already does that, and they're part of the backups program, in which allows agencies to tra, travel across jurisdiction lines. So, uh, we're already a step ahead of that, and that goes to Chief Bossy and, and Chief Swanigan in getting that program set up. Uh, we have mutual aid agreements in place with fire departments. I, I think absolutely it's, it's a vital program that needs to continue to partner with surrounding communities. Um, along, you know, with, not only with fire and police, but other programs as well.
Mr. Price?
I'm so, I, could, could you please repeat the question? I'm sorry.
Do you think Georgetown should work with surrounding communities? And if so, how?
Should Georgetown work with other communities? And if so, how?
Yes.
Is that correct? Is that the question?
Yes.
Frankly, self-sufficiency, the concept of self-sufficiency, doesn't leave much room, doesn't leave much time for cooperation of, of one town with another. Of, for, and if, if what happens in Paris, if people get busy in Georgetown being self-sufficient from the land, they're not going to have time or interest, time to worry about what's happening in Paris over sales, because they'll be so busy, they'll be so busy raising crops in Georgetown that, that they won't need to think about what's happening in other towns, and they won't have time.
Unfortunately, your time has elapsed. Ms. Tackett?
Absolutely. Um, besides the mutual aid, I know that the Fire Department will train in other st, other counties with each other. They'll help each other out. And the other thing is, is whenever we come up with issues, we'll call our surrounding counties to see how they're doing it, as they will call us to see how we're doing it, so that we can help one another and guide people through. If we're like the first starters, then we'll help them and guide them because we've already got it done. So, yes, absolutely.
Thank you. Mr. Lesby?
Yes, absolutely. It, it is imperative. It's beneficial to, to all involved. We're part of the Kentucky League of Cities, and I was just trying to think of, in addition to what Todd was talking about with the um, the Police Departments and the Sheriff's Department and Communication that goes back and forth between our city and, and the, the other surrounding cities. Uh, we also have the connection with Frankfurt, so that we can buy water from Frankfurt in situations where our, our flow may be a little bit low. Same thing with Kentucky American. We work with the city of, although Kentucky American's privately owned company, we still work with the city of, of Lexington as it relates to stormwater and the, the water coming um from, from Lexington and the trailer park that's to the south. So, there, there's just a lot of issues that are going on, but we have good relation-
Unfortunately, your time has elapsed. Mr. Shaw Walter?
Again, as, 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 has already been mentioned, we're, we're currently working with Fayette County on the, as Mr. Lesby just mentioned, we're currently working with Fayette County on the, the sewer line project that's running from the, that will be running from the trailer parks back into the city of Georgetown. Uh, we've got a mutual aid agreements, as, as already, has already been mentioned, with our Fire Department and surrounding Fire Departments in other cities, providing aid. And then we have agreements uh with our Police Department and surrounding Police Departments in other communities. And due to the relationship that we have with these surrounding communities, uh, those relationships will continue in the future. They're not going to stop to, to see if we can partner up with other communities.
Thank you. Ms. Lesby Mitchell?
Absolutely. Um, I'm proud to say that many communities call us already. Um, we're leaders when it comes to innovation and, and how to get things done. And we're followers as well. Um, we have our city attorney. Whenever we have a question at council, when a situation comes up, we ask other counties, other cities our size, bigger cities, smaller cities. Why would you reinvent the wheel if you didn't have to? Um, as David said, we're members of the Kentucky League of Cities, where we meet um quite often. We're trained there, and people come together, hundreds of people that do the same job we do, and we talk about issues and how to resolve those.
Thank you. The last question comes from Cash Turner, a junior at Great Crossing High School. Cash asks, why have you chosen to run for Georgetown City Council? Each candidate will ha, again, have 45 seconds to respond. Mr. Stone, you may begin.
Why did I choose to run for City Council? Um- Why did I choose to run for city council? 22 years in law enforcement, working for the city of Georgetown and for Scott County. I worked for the county road department. It's, it was just something that was, you know, that I've served the city of Georgetown and Scott County, and once I retired, I looked for another way to continue that and to make sure that I'm, make Georgetown a better place than it was yesterday.
Thank you. Mr. Price.
The question is, why did I choose to run for the town council, to run for election to the town council?
Yes, sir.
My whole reason, my whole agenda for running as a candidate for election to the town council is based on my lifelong experience in horticulture and farm work, including timber production. I know that we can produce in Georgetown everything we need, and, but it's not set up that way. We are set up to bring in big business like Kroger, like Walmart, like Lowe's, and the town expects those big businesses to prosper and then to harvest from those big businesses tax revenue. People, individuals raising Kro-
I'm sorry, sir, your time has elapsed. Ms. Tackett?
I love to serve and I have a servant's heart, and I want to give back to the community that's given me so much. I love being an intricate, an intricate part of making decisions that move our community to the future. And people like, young people like Cash and you all, that we can leave you all something good, something that you can stand there and you can move forward on and make it even better, make it better for everybody moving forward. I'm grateful to live here. It is the best place to live.
Thank you. Mr. Lesby.
So, when I was your age, I remember being at home and George Lesby, who was our county judge, Tammy's father, would come over and speak with my dad about issues that were going on in the community. And I found them extremely fascinating. Maybe you all do, hearing us talk about some of the things that are going on tonight. But to me, it was, it was, I just enjoyed it so much. And I wanted to get involved, and I did at a fairly young age, I guess I was in my mid twenties, when I got involved. And I want to make things better, and I guess I always have. I like to get involved, I like to take something that might not look so good, and I like to turn it into something that people can be proud of. And I want to do the same thing with the community. I want to keep working for the community and to continue to make-
Thank you. Mr. Shawalter.
Beginning at a very young age, my mother and father taught my brother, my sister and myself to give something back and to a community where I was born and raised. And other than serving in the US military and wearing the uniform, this has been one of the most rewarding positions I've ever held in my life. And I'm humbled every day and have been for 10 years now in the city council, and just want to give something back, as has already been mentioned, and try to make this community even better than where it is today.
Thank you. Mrs. Mitchell? Sorry.
Yes, I love this town, and I feel like I have a responsibility to pay back the good that has been given to me by living here. As David Joseph said, my father has been in politics for 60 years, 60, 70 years. I've heard it since I was a little girl, and I was always taught that you don't complain about things, you get out there and try to make them better. And that's why I ran for city council the first time and why I am running again.
Thank you.
We will now be moving into our closing remarks. Each candidate will get two minutes to make a closing statement. Just another reminder that this will be uninterrupted. Candidates, this is your time and you may use it however you want. This time, we will move from the right side to the left side of the stage. Ms. Lesby Mitchell, you may begin whenever you're ready.
Thank you very much for having us here tonight. It's been a pleasure to sit on this stage with these fine people. I appreciate the responsibility that I have been given in being a city councilwoman. What I promise to you is that I will always study the issues, I will listen to everyone who needs a voice, and I will be that voice for them. I take my responsibilities seriously, I will make hard decisions, and I will do what I think is best for the city of Georgetown. Thank you so much for letting me serve in the past two years, and I would appreciate it if you would let me continue to serve. Thank you.
Mr. Shawalter.
It has been an honor for the past 10 years to serve this wonderful community, and I'm grateful for that opportunity. Georgetown is a really neat place with a lot to offer, and I think my record speaks for itself over the past 10 years, so I won't talk about me anymore. What I would encourage everybody here, if you haven't already voted, get out and vote, please, it's important. For those that might be watching at home, if you haven't voted, take the time and go vote. It's critical that everybody participates. Thank you.
Mr. Lesby.
Well, I want to thank the three of you. You all have done an excellent job tonight, and I appreciate what you've done. I want to thank Landon as well for this opportunity, and certainly everybody that made it possible. I also appreciate the opportunity to be a part of the city council and to give back to the community. It's been an honor, it's been, it's been a challenge, made a lot of good friends, and I've learned a lot. And I feel like I put a lot of effort into it, and I want to continue to do that. So, anyway, thanks for putting this together tonight, and I'd ask for your support, and if anybody has any questions, they can certainly reach out to me, they can send me a message on Messenger, they can talk, contact me through City Hall, and I'll be glad to answer any questions directly. Thank you.
Ms. Tackett?
I'm very humbled and honored to be a part of Georgetown City Council and working with the team that we have at City Hall and all of the council members. They're also open and they're easy to talk to, we can talk to each other, our mayor. I'm very grateful to be able to give back and to serve, and I want to continue to do that, and I hope I get to continue to do that. I just want to, I just want to make Georgetown good and great, and I just want to hope that I continue to do that. And I thank you all so much. I'm so proud of you all. You all did a great job, and I'm very grateful, and I'm glad to have been a part of this tonight. So, thank you very much.
Mr. Price.
I want to thank you as well. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
I want to thank you as well for setting this up. It's quite impressive, this forum that you have set up, and I thank you for providing us with the opportunity to participate. And I will say in regard to my candidacy, this is, I'm going to read to you from an ad that appears in today's news graphic. Horsepower, the machine, the industrial revolution, motor transport, computers, they're all one big negligent, regrettable hoedown. Let's pick up the hoe and tend our Garden of Eden. And number, I've got an itemized agenda below there, says vote Steve Price for Town Council 2020. Vote no pay for the town's electees, including me. I will demonstrate to my colleagues if I'm elected and to the town, you don't have to have money to have a good life. You can produce it from the land. And my whole intention in running for the town council is to lead in that direction. I would also say to any Hispanic people, yo hablo Espanol. I would also say that very important, the town, I have benefited from vision training. When I was seven years old here in Georgetown, they were putting eyeglasses on everybody they could. They put them on me, I recovered my vision, the greatest thing that's ever happened to me. And the town should be distributing information on vision training as opposed to corrective lenses and especially surgery for vision problems.
Unfortunately, your time has elapsed.
Thank you.
Mr. Stone.
As a lifelong resident of the city of Georgetown, I've seen many changes over the years. From even before when Toyota was here, that was nothing but farmland, to where it is now, it has grown leaps and bounds. First and foremost, thank you all and Great Crossings High School for hosting this tonight. But what I want to say is that to continue, council, Georgetown City Council needs to have good, solid stewards and leadership of its city council. I think we have that. I hope that I am a part of that, and I would hope that everyone would vote for me, but that if not, I understand. But no matter what, take that step and get out and vote, because make your voice heard. Thank you all.
That concludes this wonderful night of debate. We'd like to thank the candidates, the audience, and Scott County schools for helping to make this night run so well. And we'd like to remind everyone that voting is open now through November 3rd. Additionally, if you still have your absentee ballot, you still have time to send it in. You can also vote early at the Scott County Public Library, or you can vote at your local precinct on Election Day.
Thank you and good night.